Did you want to make me?
No, I'll give it the banner, though. Ash has it.
I got it.
Yeah, just give it to her.
Okay, it's in a box here?
Why did you know if you wanted to do it like at the meeting?
No, 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 no.
No, not for that, okay.
That's cool, yeah.
You get to take a look at it?
Yeah, I'll get to take a look at it, yeah.
I'm excited, are you gonna come?
We haven't got the date yet.
Yeah, we don't.
I'm still waiting, I'm hoping that the next, they have so many managers. They have five managers, so the manager I talked to the first time is, I don't even know if she's still a manager. Because they mentioned all, I says, who's the gal I met? And she says she may write all the names, and I says, I don't remember any of them, so.
Oh, no.
Okay, I need to, I need to get organized here.
Thank you so much, Dana. I didn't know if I needed to be at the meeting.
No, I'm just wanted to make sure you got it, and this is the best place to transition.
Yeah.
You're welcome. I hope you like it.
Hey, Charles. Don't worry, sir. Good to see you, yeah, blessed.
Now what? You realize this is not a meeting of the post, right? Okay, alright. Okay, what is this?
So right at the end of that?
What is this?
That's what I'm gonna talk about. So, just at the end. Say, you can get the awards right out of that, directly.
I have a different script. What do you want me to do with this?
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you that.
You want to make comments first, and then we do the awards?
Well, that's what he's doing, that's the plan.
Okay.
That was the plan, I don't know what.
Nothing's changed, it's the same.
I don't, what's this?
So that's what it looks like, that's what the banner's gonna look like that we've got. It's thirteen feet long by four.
I hope he can read the names a lot better than.
Ma'am, you probably should go ahead and start the meeting.
Let's get him to sit down there. Get him to sit. Alright. I appreciate that. I haven't even got my agenda. Good evening, well, good evening, Ariel. Welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of Citrus Heights for today, July 9th. And I'll take a roll call first, then we'll do a pledge.
The roll call, Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft is absent, and Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
Next is the flag salute.
Councilmember Middleton, would you please begin the pledge?
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Oh, I wanted to report that we had a closed session prior to this open meeting, and there was no reportable action. Is that good enough? Okay. Video statement is next, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, July fourteenth, at nine AM on Metro Cable Channel fourteen. And this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Approval of agenda.
Move approval.
A second.
Moved in second, and all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming July twenty twenty-five as Park and Recreation Month.
And I've asked Councilmember Nelson to handle this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to invite our Sunrise Park District Executive Team and staff members up, please, to the podium. Thank you all. So, this is the proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming July twenty twenty-five as National Park and Recreation Month. Whereas National Park and Recreation Month is celebrated in July, recognizing the importance of equitable access to local parks, recreation, trails, open space, and facilities for the community. This year marks the fortieth anniversary of Park and Recreation Month, and twenty twenty-five's theme, Build Together, Play Together, celebrates the many ways park and recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community. And whereas park and recreation foster social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas park and recreation supports and encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas park and recreation programs are an integral part of the Citrus Heights community, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community. And whereas the Sunrise Recreation and Park District, celebrating its seventy-fifth anniversary this year, serves the Citrus Heights community and promotes physical, emotional, and mental wellness through organized fitness, play, activities, and special events in city, in partnership with the city. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Citrus Heights declares the month of July twenty twenty-five to be National Park and Recreation Month in Citrus Heights, and urges all citizens to become familiar with the parks, trails, facilities, programs, and services available to them, and further recognizes the Sunrise Recreation and Park District's contribution to the City of Citrus Heights community.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, why not? Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Kevin Hunsinger, District Administrator, Sunrise Rec and Park District. Just wanted to thank you, the council and the city, for providing us with the proclamation and taking the time to recognize us tonight. And just wanted to mention, without this fantastic partnership with Sunrise Rec and Park District and the City of Citrus Heights, I don't think we're hitting that seventy-five-year milestone, so thank you guys for that. I did want to take the opportunity to kind of introduce some of our staff that really make this all happen. So I'll start with our executive team. Margaret Haddon is our Superintendent of Administrative Services and Human Resources. Wayne Edmondson is our Superintendent of Parks. And Marty Bruhl is our Superintendent of Recreation Services. And then we have Jaime Fonseca, who I think most of you here know, as a park supervisor. And Alex Luong is one of our recreation coordinators. I would say Jaime and Alex are the ones that you guys probably see on the ground, doing all the work. They are our face in the community, so I just want to thank all of you guys for representing Sunrise Rec and Park District. And again, thank the City Council and city staff for taking the time and providing this proclamation, thank you.
Do you want to pump up your event that's coming?
Sure, yeah, let everybody know that we are celebrating our seventy-fifth with a large event on October fourth. It is our seventy-fifth anniversary jubilee. We will have vendors, we'll have a car show, correct? We'll have fireworks, and we will have a band playing prior to the fireworks. So, come on out October fourth at Rush Community Park, thank you.
Comments from councilmembers? We'll start with Councilmember Middleton.
So I just want to tell you guys, one of the first things when I moved to Citrus Heights a decade ago was that the parks were amazing. I met so many unique, really cool people for a little bit. We were into larking, and we went to Rush Park, and those folks are still there. I'm a little older now, so I can't really get involved in that. But the seniors who walk every Wednesday, we participate in that. There are so many things that you as, you guys bring to this community that is just amazing. And I just wanted to also make sure you guys know that when National Night Out happens, we should be able to have a Pokéstop put at San Juan Park. I've been working with some very avid Pokemon players who are gonna make that a part of what they do. They're gonna make Pokéstops at all of our parks here in Citrus Heights. And thank you all so much for all the work you do.
You're gonna have to explain what a Pokéstop is.
I am not seventeen years old anymore, so I don't think I can.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes, I too am a big fan of the parks, love Rush Park. It's just, the tempo of parks great, I mean, there's just so much recreation here locally that we are just so fortunate to have the park right in our city. So thank you very much for all the work you do.
Councilmember Nelson?
Same as what my colleagues have said, the parks are beautiful. Rush Park is my favorite with the oak trees and the rolling hills, you just can't beat the sights there. And I'm really looking forward to the amphitheater coming too, for more local music. So thank you all, your whole team, for what you do.
Well, I think it shows just teamwork that you have, the teamwork that we have, and then the cooperation we have between our teams. And, you know, going back to your predecessor, Dave Mitchell, our neighborhoods have been an integral part of the parks and some of the upgrades that we've done in our neighborhoods with the park district. You've been a terrific partner to the neighborhoods and to the city. So I just hope that continues on, because so far, so good. We're doing good, and really, you appreciate a month of proclamations. I mean, you deserve it, so that's good. Would we like a photo? Let's do a photo.
Yes, yeah. I think so. You going up here?
Yeah.
Okay?
Back over here.
Okay.
And what can I go in this terminal, what kind of corner area? Yeah. Squeeze down. Yes, squeeze in a little bit more. Alright. One. One, two, three. Go ahead. One, two, three. Alright, thanks.
Next item, please.
Next item, presentation four B, presentation by American Legion Post six-three-seven Citrus Heights.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Charles Stone, and I am the commander for American Legion Post six-thirty-seven. Can you guys hear me? I'm the commander for American Legion Post six-thirty-seven, and I'm here with the board of, our executive council board. Wanted to talk about a couple of things. Our biggest one is since nineteen fifty-five, the American Legion has been in this city. Our whole mission is to help veterans in the city, and we've been doing that since nineteen fifty-five. In twenty sixteen, former councilmember Sue Frost started the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue. And with the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue, which is our primary fundraiser for the city. We have partnered with the Daughters of the American Revolution Rotary, the City, Parks Director, who's behind me, Lions, many bands and barbecue companies. We follow the POW method, or the Power of We, meaning the Legion can't stand alone, we have to stand with other people. And over those years that we've been doing this, we have done a lot. Every year with the Battle of the Bands, we recognize veterans services. Last year, we did Nicole G. For those who don't remember, Nicole G was a sergeant in the Marine Corps at Abbey Gate in Afghanistan. She went to Oakmont High School, same school as my kids. This year, we're gonna honor the seven hundred and sixty Californians who died as part of the Global War on Terror. Four from this city. As far as I can tell, they've never been recognized for that. As the councilmembers have, you have this as a banner. This banner is thirteen feet by four feet, and it's gonna have every one of the names of every Californian who died as part of the Global War on Terror. Four of those names are in red, to recognize that they're from the City of Citrus Heights. Those four names are Sergeant Keisha Hines, PFC Sean Anthony Silva, Tech Sergeant Christopher Solzby, and PFC Alexander Varejo. I believe we have a slideshow that you can see right now. These are each one of the photos for the four members from the City of Citrus Heights. As you heard me earlier talking about the Power of We, we have partnered with the Daughters of the American Revolution in the back to make sure that every single veteran from California is gonna be on the slideshow for the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue. That should be the end, and now it's gonna go into the seven hundred and sixty other names. You also have in front of you our flyer for the event. The flyer for the event, there's also some in the back. Every year, we do this, we try to keep it so it's family-friendly. So this year, it's roughly fifty dollars for all you can eat, all you can drink. We're gonna have a bounce house for kids, there'll be three barbecue companies, and either three or four bands, going from eleven to four. The event raises money for all of our veterans in our community. There's a couple people here in the back of the room that have helped out. This last year, our veteran service officer, or our post-service officer, we have two of them in the back, Steve Gall, can you please stand, Steve? And Ben. These two have overseen helping twenty-six veterans in your community. Everything from just helping filling out their forms, to going to their houses of veterans who are in need, fixing electrical items, rebuilding things, just basically improving their standard of living, along with helping a veteran who his backyard had just become too overgrown. We do this all within the community, and these two are the two guys who really make it happen.
Okay, so first of all, like, a couple things. I want to thank you for coming and presenting the slideshow you did. Thank you for the flyer, invite you to come back maybe towards the end of August and re-remind people about the event. But I think tonight also is a special evening for Ben and Steve.
Coming up.
So we'd like to call them up.
We had to trick them.
Hi, Ben, hi, Steve.
Hello.
Your post commander has recommended that you receive certificates of appreciation from our council and our city. And I will start with Steve. Steve Gall, post-service officer, American Legion Post six-three-seven Citrus Heights. In recognition of your outstanding dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to serving our veterans, we proudly present this certificate of appreciation. Since July twenty twenty-four, you have exemplified the spirit of the American Legion's Be the One campaign by assisting over twenty-four veterans, offering critical support in times of need. The City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize Steve Gall and thank him for his commitment to our veterans and this community. And we also recognize Ben Lair, American Legion Post six-three-seven Citrus Heights. In recognition of your outstanding dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to serving our veterans, we proudly present this certificate of appreciation. During the period of July twenty twenty-four and June twenty twenty-five, you have exemplified the spirit of the American Legion's Be the One campaign by assisting over twenty-six veterans, easing stress and anxiety in Citrus Heights and surrounding areas. The City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize Ben Lair and thank him for his commitment to our veterans and this community. We'll do a picture, you want to speak anything else about these guys?
Ladies and gentlemen, these guys have helped out a lot.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Sorry. I just wanted to say, one of the things that these guys don't want to, they've worked really, really hard to include helping veterans who are on the edge of suicide, and then walking them back from that edge by providing the support that they needed. So that's why they really wanted to make sure they recognized them, to make sure that everyone knows how appreciative both me, the board, and the city are for all that you guys have done. Let's get a photo.
Gotta go up there?
Yep, gotta get your picture underneath the sign.
Get your whole crew. I need you please, is there a possibility we can do it this way?
Yep.
We've got this podium in the way. So sorry, everyone.
I'll be right there, guys.
You said you were Army.
Next item, please.
The next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And the first speaker card I have is from Daryl Mott.
Good evening, Mayor Karpinski Costa and councilmembers. I had two speaker cards, I had one for an update of when I was here last year, and then another one on item eleven, which was the grand jury report. Which one am I speaking on first?
This is the update from last year.
Awesome, okay, cool, so you have my PowerPoint up there, I appreciate that. I came in in August of twenty twenty-three, August fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, I talked with Chief Turkot, and now Captain Morse with the Roseville Police Department. Brought up a lot of issues of some problem houses, we were having a lot of issues in the neighborhood. And then a year later, on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, I came in and I presented to then Mayor Daniels, and also Mayor Schaefer, and a few of the other members that were here, and again explained that we were having problems with a problem house, a lot of drug activity, people were passed out, drive-by shootings, overdoses, et cetera. Several other members of the community came up, and they actually said, you know, we need to really try and do something about this. Finally, later on that year in October, the, what do you call it, the impact team came, and they made an impact. They came up and cleaned the house by me. However, Amy, would you please flip over to the next slide? One more. So all of these items, you know, have happened to me, which was on the house next door to me. And now, if you go down to Canelo Hills, just around the corner from my house, a lot of the people who were living at my house were moved to that house around the corner. And now I've seen some pictures, the house is abandoned, it's red-tagged, there's trash all in the backyard, there's walls, I guess, I don't know if the walls are there to keep people out, or to keep the trash from overflowing over the fence. But it's been there, and now it's still there today. I went by today, and there was somebody out in a car, moving things around, a bunch of trash on the street. And it's just, it's an eyesore. And so, I come back to the meeting to address these items. A lot of these items were not considered criminal, or not considered reportable. Go and flip to the next slide, Amy. So, these were the questions I brought a year ago, and then two years ago, to Chief Turkot. And this is the third year I'm bringing them to you guys again. How do we submit insurance claim if there's no police report? How do you request a restraining order if there's no police reports? What do you do when civil litigation is just more salt in the room, the wound? If you have a person. If you have a person with limited financial means, or simply just doesn't care, how do you address this problem with that person? If you don't have a police recourse, civil recourse to a person that doesn't have any financial means does you no good. And so they keep doing the same problems, and this is why I believe we have these repetitive, you know, issues. So I'm again gonna ask the city, do we need to add or improve the code enforcement? Should it be at the discretion of certain employees, or applied the same for all? You know, do we want to, as a city, have piles of trash up there? My house that was with me, there was trash in the same way. My yard was flooded several times, and I brought those issues up numerous times with the city. The smell and the junk that came into my yard got me and my dog sick. And so, I look at that, and I say, as a citizen of this city, I've been here for twenty-four years, I haven't seen the city this rundown in the time that I've been here. So I want to plead for the city to try and please do something. I don't want to drive home and look at that when I come home, it's just, it's unacceptable. I'm not sure how we solve the problem. I don't want to be crass, and I don't want to say, these people need help. Whatever the drug concoction that the cartels have cooked up, these people need help, they're addicted. I was over at the Chase Bank, and I happened to drive by the Plasma Center. There was somebody passed out on the Plasma Center, there was somebody else with a red band getting drugs over there. And it's like, we need help, we need to do something about this, we need to get the drugs out of our city, we need to stop this scourge, and we need to start enforcing the code again. And I'm not quite sure how we go about that, and I'm planning to move up to Placer County. I'm gonna move up to Rockland if I can, if I can afford it. I was gonna do this last year, and I thought, hey, they cleaned up the problem house, maybe I won't have to. But the issues remain, I'm still, and now I'm even being attacked, and, you know, because I complained it nauseam about these houses, I'm even being woken up at night, just like I hear that our federal officers are being woken up at their hotels and homerooms. I'm even being woken up at night, just like I hear that our federal officers are being woken up at their hotels and homerooms. Sleep deprivation is a serious, serious issue. It causes mental and health issues. I'm 55 years old. If I was 25, I could pull an all-nighter and go to college. I'm 55. I need my sleep. I can't live on three hours of sleep. And these people, we need to figure out a way to, you know, kind of get this together. And I want to comment on the other item as well, but what do we need to do to get this as an agenda item so that I can come up here and talk with you about specific issues? And we can have a dialogue with the community because just today I was talking with Dale and there was a person who drove up to my friend's house right across the street from me.
Wrap it up. You come back for item 11.
Sure thing. Sure thing. I'll come back for the other one. But this is really important. A guy drove up to my friend's house, we're in a nice neighborhood, went up to the front door, shook on the front door, went into the backyard and tried to get into the house. Dale called me, he called Mary, and we converged on the house in about five minutes. But this is unacceptable behavior in the city. That's all I wanted to say. That's my Festivus. I'm back here for another year of my Festivus.
Okay, see you back at item 11. Are there any more speakers?
Yes. So next, David Shelton Hughes want to speak on item number nine. So I'll hold that. So I can hold that for item number nine. The next is Melissa Hayden.
Don't start with me, Jada. Hi, everybody. Actually, I liked a lot of the positivity in the beginning of this. I didn't have intentions of speaking, but there was so much positivity that I do actually want to think a lot of things that are going on. So I started coming to city council meetings about two years ago. This is kind of for the public and for you guys that are watching, you know, anybody who's watching. I wanted to say that though I know a lot of people sit back and say, hey, there's been no change. There's been no change. Where are we going? What's going on? Since I've been able to work with everybody, talk to everybody and continue this as much as I can, I want to say that there's such a positive improvement. Things are coming, changes are happening. And if you want change, you have to really work hard at it and keep going, be persistent in your dreams. So a lot of people who have watched and commented, I know a lot of people are watching and seeing what happened a while back with a city council meeting. I do want to say that both Jana and I have discussed and are apologies to each other. And we are good and we are actually partnering together for a future event to help animals. So just because you have a bad day or something happens doesn't mean it's the end of the world and we can keep focusing on the positive, moving forward to help our dreams come true. So I did want to mention that. Today I also had an amazing rescue. I just wanted to say, I look horrible, sorry. I just got done with about a three and a half hour rescue with kittens that were dumped in a park. And I wanted to say, it was amazing to see how well our community has come together. So our community members, trappers came out, rescues came out, animal control right on the ball came out. And investigations being done and seeing our community on such a positive note and a positive level and working so hard to make a difference and a change, I really appreciate that. And I wanted to let the city, you guys know, and I want to thank everybody involved with the upcoming changes that will be happening soon for Citrus Heights. And that's it.
And you're under five minutes.
And I did it in less than, oh, I got time. So anyway.
So what I might add for you, Melissa, is that she's planning to do a fundraiser because she's got a deal going. You can talk about your deal going 30 or 40 kitties?
We are going to be doing 30 spanneuters for the city. They will be feral trapped cats and kittens. I have partnered with a local veterinarian here in our city. We will be doing a fundraiser. We do not have a date at this time, but as soon as it's available, we will let the city know. We are going to be collecting donations in order to help get those 30 cats spayed and neutered at the low cost. And, no cost for feral cats, but low cost from the veterinarian. They came up with a very reasonable price to do this situation. So we're just going to go out there and do a fundraiser. And I hope everybody can come and see and help as a community event to help our animals and to show our passion and compassion for what's going on and that we are trying to make a difference.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Yes, next is An- Angel Leaky Rosenberg. Sorry about that. Florence Cording Lee. So they're going to speak together.
Madam Mayor and council members and everybody, citizens watching. I'm Angelique Rosenberg and I've been a citizen here in Citrus Heights going on 20 years. And from the moment I arrived here, my neighbor Florence across the street and her husband Paul have been wonderful neighbors. And so I have had a great beginning here in Citrus Heights. I did see Mayor at the big day of giving recently in Bel Vista for Fair Oaks, Orangevale, Citrus Heights. And it was very positive to have Citrus Heights involved in that event. I get to enjoy the Madera Park. I love playing tennis there. My kids played softball, baseball and T-ball growing up and other parks with other sports. And so it is my first time here and I'm very grateful to be here. And the reason why we came together is because there's some decline in our streets and it's not just potholes. It's actually like sinking, sinkholes.
What's your street? What street are you?
Mesa Oakway. And we did get to talk with Mary Poole and so she took notes as well. But we just, we do really want to communicate that it's a big concern because it's been a number of years. I like to run and walk in the neighborhoods and I go over to the neighboring area and I would see streets parked, blocked off because they're repaving. And I said, wow, they're repaving practically every year and what's happening? I don't think I've ever seen my street blocked off for repaving and I've been there so many years. But I'll let Florence talk as well. Thank you.
I've lived in my home at 8069 Mesa Oakway for 47 years. And our roads are in the worst condition that I have ever, ever seen. They're crumbling. Our sidewalks are cracked. There's not a single house in our neighborhood that doesn't have cracked sidewalks. Our gutters are cracking. Our roads are literally deteriorating. And it's sad because it used to be so pristine. And to live there that long and see it deteriorating as bad as it is, it's very upsetting. And like she said, she has a sinkhole in front of her house. You can't always see it. If the sun doesn't hit it just right, you're going to fall in it. My husband has Parkinson's as well as arthritis and I have osteopenia. So it's a hazard for us as well. And I'll be 78 next Tuesday. So you can understand why my bones are brittle. But I've always loved my home and I'm proud of it and I'd like to be able to keep that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mesa Oak on, yes, it's on the city list.
And I do have a couple of speaker sheets to read. That was all of them for this portion, but I do have a couple to read. So the first one is from Alfred Sanchez. We are concerned about the Citrus Heights Chronic Offenders Program, specifically the criteria used to identify chronic offenders. According to my understanding, the program considers individuals with 10 citations in a year as chronic offenders. Regardless of whether those citations result in convictions, I strongly believe that citations and convictions are two different things and convictions should be the basis for determining chronic offender status. 10 citations can be issued for various reasons, including misunderstandings or dismissed charges, which may not necessarily indicate a pattern of chronic offending behavior. I respectfully request that city officials consider revising the program's criteria to focus on convictions rather than citations. This change would ensure that the program targets individuals who have been proven to engage in repeat offending behavior rather than those who may have been unfairly or mistakenly cited. The next public comment is from Rick Hodgkins. Mayor and members of the city council, it has been a long time since I addressed all of you, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for shooting down the most previous proposed land for Sunrise Mall, which would have included an In-N-Out Burger. Even though we need more In-N-Out Burger locations, I would have to agree, Sunrise Mall is not the place for an In-N-Out Burger. As I remember telling Casey Kemp and I about almost four years ago, is that where are a couple of people going to go when it's rainy and windy outside? I would highly recommend that any current or future stores inside the mall have a way to enter them from the inside as well as from the outside. This is the way the anchor stores in the mall are built. That way you can enter the store from either the inside of that mall or from the outside of the mall. Maybe if we just do that, tenants might be willing to have space there. As far as getting rid of a lot of the parking available at the mall, I would agree having places outside for the spring and summertime are warranted. But please, let's keep the inside of the mall and redesign storefronts and restaurants, both for current and future tenants, for people to be able to enter not only from the inside and the outside, just like the way the anchor stores have their entrances and exits set up. And that concludes the written public comment for this portion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Amy. Next item, please.
You had wanted to speak on a different item and so I'll call your name later during that item.
This was with a special item, so do we talk to that one after this?
We have items not on the agenda and then items that are on the agenda. So you have another one for an item on the agenda.
Well, it was for the special meeting agenda. There was a public comment I saw for the first five o'clock meeting that you said was closed, but I wanted to comment on that. Can I comment on that?
The public comment for that is closed. We'll wait till the end of the meeting, okay? Because it's, we had our closed session.
Okay. I had a lot of comments on that, but I'll wait. I'll come back.
Okay. And you have a comment on our closed session?
I'll send in a comment.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Hasn't been much going on, has it?
No, Mayor.
You're on vacation. You had a nice vacation.
Yes. In fact, in lieu of reporting on any meetings, since I had none, I wanted to give you an update on the Terra Madre event that I had mentioned recently. You asked me for more details, so I thought I'd take a minute to give that. So Terra Madre is an international food event, food festival. And I learned about this at our Cap to Cap trip when we went to DC. And I served on the Food and Ag Committee with chefs and vitners and farmers from our region. And they elaborated on this event that's coming to Sacramento, which is very exciting. Sacramento will have the Western Hemisphere territory for this event. So it'll be held every odd year in Sacramento, which should bring a lot of tourism. And the main event is held in Italy. It will be on the even years. So this year, the first event for Terra Madre Americas, they're calling it, will be September 26 through 28. And it will be mostly located at the Safe Credit Union Convention Center and then the surrounding areas. So there will be a marketplace, celebrity chef demonstrations, live music, food for purchase, educational workshops and panels, and then other outdoor vendors. And the Italy location has received about 300,000 attendees over the years. So we're expecting a lot of people to flock to Sacramento from, hopefully, the entire world, but certainly the whole Western Hemisphere.
We don't have to go to Italy?
And we don't have to go to Italy, though. I would love to go to Italy next year. So this is just a really fun and interesting event and I'm happy that it's being brought to our region. So I wanted to elaborate on that. So again, it's September 26 through the 28.
Thank you. Is that it?
It is.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been, like you said, a pretty slow month so far, but I did take some time to actually go out and view the murals that are being painted by local artists along Auburn Boulevard. And they're just amazing. And what I really like about what's going on here is that it's not just the artists that are there, but it's a partnership between Citrus Heights Arts, the City of Citrus Heights, and local businesses, really trying to find a way to revitalize that corridor. I mean, there is some really swaggy stuff going on over there by Dark Heart Brewery and like other spots. I just, I'm blown away that this guy got out there with some cans of spray paint and put a car on the side of the building. It's awesome. I also decided to go and try a new haircut. And so I went over to Pressure Barber Shop since I was looking at the mural. So I went over there and I was like, oh, that was a really nice spot, too. And it's pretty kind of eclectic and cool and I, anybody who needs a haircut, maybe not you, Councilmember Schaefer, but anyone who's looking for a nice place to go and kind of relax and get that spa treatment, they're pretty great. And we have, I have two upcoming meetings for the Metro Cable Budget Meeting. It's scheduled for July 21. I'll have to report back to that in August. And the Metro Air District Board Meeting is scheduled for July 24. And I'll report back on that in August as well. And also, just to talk about National Night Out on August 5, I am hosting a Pokemon Go event. I did kind of text my son to explain to me exactly what that is. So basically you take your cell phone and you catch imaginary Pokemon, which are just these little imaginary animals and you run around and people, it's a big, it's a cult following, basically. Kids love to do it. And so I thought it'd be a great way to, yeah, yeah, just like that. Great way to kind of get folks engaged in the community and doing something a little bit different. So we'll have a bunch of snacks and games. And if you create a Pokéstop, it means that it's a place that's recognized for its value adds to the community. So we're doing that at San Juan Park. And there'll be like a lot of extra Pokemon there. So that's why people tend to gather in those spaces. I noticed as they do this, they pull some at the outlets. And so I was like, oh, that's pretty cool. See, I was always wondering, like, you know, during the holidays, like summer break, kids like just wandering around with their phones. And I'm like, what are y'all doing? They're playing Pokemon Go. So that's all I got in here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been, I want to say, quiet from a council standpoint, incredibly busy from my personal day job. But I did make it over to Miller's Ace Hardware for their second year anniversary. It was great. They're very associated with Make-A-Wish there. It's just, they're just an amazing company. Their business is growing. It's great to see that. I've been dying to have a hardware store in Citrus Heights. And I come from Clear Cross Town to go to Miller's. So I won't shop for hardware anywhere but Miller's. It's great. They have all different kinds of things in there besides hardware. So I bought one of the big giant chairs that they have in there and about that when they first opened two years ago. And it's really fun. So very excited about Terra Madre. I made a note on that. We're not going to have a meeting on the 23rd this year. So this is our last opportunity to talk about National Night Out. And also, we also have a City Scoop that's on the 16th. So I just would encourage folks to come out and participate. And we love to get to know you guys. And it is, I know from my perspective, from talking to all the other council members, we're really accessible. So I would really encourage you, if you want to come out, love to see you at one of these events, National Night Out or City Scoop. And looking forward to the great rest of the month of July. Thanks, Mayor.
There's still time to register your event for National Night Out. I tried, I did push the submit button and it didn't go through. So I was going to come back to the city and have Jordan work on it. But hopefully, you know, if you want to have an event and you want the police department and city council members to stop by, you register your National Night Out on the Citrus Heights Police website. And so I encourage you to do that and attend any in your neighborhood that's around. So there's several going to be up there. We have one at the Veterans Community Center on Sylvan Road. And so for our neighborhood, we're partnering with the veterans and with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And so we're doing Brats and Blues, Bratwurst and Blues. And Cece has a boombox to play the blues. Anyhow, since the last council meeting, I sat in the fireworks booth in front of Sprouts for a week, selling fireworks with the post and raising money for nonprofits. And I did go to the Stars and Stripes event on the 28th. None of you were there. It was me and Mary Jane and Councilmember Lopez Taft were there. And I didn't stay for the shoot 'em ups. I greeted the people and then I'm not a big fan of I greeted the people, and then I'm not a big fan of illegal, I'm not a big fan of aerial fireworks. So I went home, hold my dogs close to me for that. I can hear them. They seemed longer this year than usual. It seemed it went longer. I did Monday with the mayor last week, this week, and you did it for me the week before.
I did.
So thank you for that. I had sewer meeting this morning, and it's kind of a boring, this is the boring time of year for most of the, because it's budget time, collect delinquent this and delinquent that, levy fees for this, but did you realize that there are, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta read this, it's so cool, delinquent sewer bills. 16,946 accounts are delinquent, totaling $13.4 million. Whoa. So anyway, it goes on the property tax bill, and so by the time it gets posted on the bill, there's few people pay up, so it won't be that big, but that's a lot of muddy that's sitting around, not going anywhere. You might have read in the Sentinel about our mosquito spraying, and it's on a certain section of 95610, going east to Sunrise and into Orangeville. I signed up for spray notifications, and I didn't get a notification, so I'm not sure, you know, and I complained about it because they're supposed to tell you. We have bees, my neighbors have bees, and so we kind of want to know, but this is not aerial spraying, but ground spraying. They, they put on a little backpack or they take the truck and they just kind of spray locally, wide area, they call it a wide area larvicide treatment. So they found those invasive mosquitoes, they're not the West Nile mosquitoes, they're the invasive ones. These are the ones that we want to know about if they bite you in the daytime, they're day biters. These are the ones that are invasive, they carry dengue, Zika virus, dengue virus, and chikungunya virus. And so we don't have the disease here, but if we have the mosquito, then it's easy enough to start transmission when the disease shows up from people who travel abroad. So do report that, do go to the website, fightthebite.net, sign up for, you know, notification if you want to, check things on that website. Report day biters, protect yourself at dawn and dusk, but these day biters are day biters, so it doesn't matter, but they do love to multiply in just a cap full of water. And they are, these invasive mosquitoes are the ones that we're releasing, all the males in Natomas, I love it. We're doing 1,200 males, the males don't bite, so there'd be a lot of mosquitoes flying around that aren't going to bite you. Don't swat them if, you know, if you live in Natomas. So 25 acres get 1,200 per acre, so a week, every week. So that's a lot of boy mosquitoes. So far, we've had three dead birds in our county, one in Elk Grove and two in the Antelope area, and six mosquito positive pools for West Nile, none of them in Citrus Heights for that. Most of the activity this year is in Chilari County, and we, we really are low for this time of year for West Nile bugs. So, but, you know, sometimes you sit back, you think you got it, but then all of a sudden it gets bad. So continue your vigilance with dumping water. Dumping the water is the breeding spot, and just get rid of it. And then we've been really busy with a, I've been really busy with this Ashby Bill. Senator Ashby has proposed a bill that is bad for our city, bad for all cities. So all the mayors of all the cities have been getting together, talking about this bill. And while we were sitting here, Ash, I just got a Zoom invite for tomorrow at 10:30 from Mayor McCarty of the city of Sacramento. So then we're going down to Ashby's little office off to the side at 11:30, so I'm jumping around tomorrow a little bit. So we've been busy doing that and signing letters and doing, but I tell you, the fireworks booth wore me out. I'm too old to sit there in the hot sun. So that's it for my report. I'm happy to find the next item.
The next item is consent calendar item five, approval of minutes, and item six, review the Sacramento Stormwater Quality Partnership Program and authorized fiscal year 2526 expenditures.
Anybody want to pull any items for discussion or separate vote? Then I call for a motion.
Move or approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number seven. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, levy fiscal year 2526 assessments. And the recommendation is to convene the public hearing and to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment until levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701.
Okay. Staff report by, who's there?
Regina.
Oh, hi.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Regina Cave, your General Services Director. And this first item before you pertains to District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4. This district was developed before the city incorporated, and in August of 1997, the city took over responsibilities of these zones. At that time, there were three zones, and Zone 2 and, excuse me, Zone 3 and Zone 4 were developed into two independent zones across town. So Zone 1, Zone 3, and Zone 4 do not have escalators. Zone 2 does have an escalator, and within the engineering staff report, it does indicate recommending a 2% increase to keep up with costs of doing business for maintaining that zone, and Zones 1, 3, and 4. Zone 1 still continues to have sufficient funds to sustain, however, Zone 3 and Zone 4 does not, so we will be subsidizing with gas tax funds, non-general fund dollars. The plan is, once the city's cost allocation plan is completed, then we will be able to go out to those respective zones to initiate potentially a 218 to increase those rates, to be able to make up the delta and be able to develop sufficient funds to be able to sustain those zones. So the item for 9701 is to convene the public hearing and then the resolution to confirm the diagram, and I will leave that at that.
So the questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the amount we subsidize from these, well, three of them, right?
Or two of them, for Werner Glenn and for Villa Creek Ridge.
Is how much a year?
We have...
Yeah, I was going to add.
Twenty-one, there was a total of 21,000, almost 22,000 expenditures. It's on page two of the staff report, so $7,732 for Heather Downs, excuse me. Werner Glenn, $6,266, so Zone 3, we are subsidizing, and for Zone 4, Oak and Creek Ridge, is $12,996 for this year. So we did decrease.
We're taking this out of the gas tax now, right? Is that what the idea is?
Correct. It is gas tax, and we were...
Gas tax that normally would go to paved streets. So we water on people's front lawns instead of paving streets? Is that what we're doing? I don't, I, I just think that this is an unfair burden on the residents to pay for landscaping that people don't want to pay for themselves. So I know we're going to support it because it has to be done, but, you know, I'd like to see, I think last year, we all wanted to see some equity, and I'm not sure we got it this year. So hopefully, we do something, and I'm saying this in public, even though I've said it to staff privately, that we, that we don't carry that burden indefinitely.
Correct. So this year, we were able to decrease some of our costs, to be able to lessen that subsidy, but again, the plan is, once the city's cost allocation plan is complete this year, then we will be able to actually go out to those respective districts. There are cost allocations that have typically been assigned to these districts, which take a significant piece of those revenues, so until that cost allocation is complete, we still don't know the full burden of the costs for those districts.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is open. Any public comment on this item? Amy, do you have anything on public comment?
Not for this item.
Okay. Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make it.
Okay. Adopt a resolution, 2025, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, confirm the diagram and assessment to levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9801, 9802, and 0301, level of levy of fiscal year 2526 assessments. The recommendation is to convene the public hearing and then adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessments and to levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for Maintenance Assessment District 9801, and adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for Zone 9802, and adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessments and levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for Zone 0301.
Any questions? Oh, no, no, you got to do a thing, presentation by Regina.
This was just to show kind of maps for reference of the location. So 9801 is just the one district with one zone, which is located right here across from City Hall, the Aspen Ranch neighborhood. We have 9802, which has Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, Sorenton Ranch, Autumn Wood, Mariposa Creek, which is off of Antelope Road, and Wyatt Ranch, which we have not yet taken possession of until the construction is complete for that project. And then we have 0301, which has Zones 1, 2, and 3, both Stock Ranch Assessment Districts and then the Mitchell Village Landscape District, which that district we will be taking ownership of in the coming months and working in tandem with the Sunrise Recreation and Park District, that they will be taking that to their board as well and accepting that construction project as complete. And all of these districts, all three districts and all the zones within the districts, all contain escalators built into those zones, so we can increase up to 4% a year to, and keep up with the costs.
So we don't subsidize any of this?
Correct. We don't, do not subsidize any of these.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments on this item?
Not for this item.
Then I will close the public hearing and stand a motion.
I'll take it. Resolution, make a motion, resolution 2025, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, confirm the diagram and assessment and to the levy fiscal year 2526 assessment for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9801, Stock Village Units Number 1 and 2.
Second. Motion made in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Somebody else want to take that?
I'll move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2025, 2026 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number 9802, Zone 1, Sorenton Ranch, Zone 2, Autumn Wood, Zone 3, Mariposa Creek, and Zone 4, Wyatt Ranch.
I'll second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll take this one. I move this resolution, number 2025, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2025, 2026 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number 0301, Zone 1, Stock Ranch North, Zone 2, Stock Ranch South, and Zone 3, Mitchell Village.
Second. Motion made in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number nine. The subject is Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District levy of fiscal year 2526 annual assessments. The recommendation is to convene the public hearing and to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2526 assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Leslie Blumquist, city engineer. So similar to the previous items, each year, the city is required to update the assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting District. At your last meeting, you took those first steps towards the proposed annual by adopting a resolution of intention calling for the public hearing tonight, July 9th. The Citrus Heights Lighting District includes every parcel in the city limits and funds operation and maintenance of all 4,818 street and safety lights that are located within city limits. No changes are recommended to the assessment rates in conjunction with this annual update. Currently, the, the district is being subsidized with Measure A up to about $180,000. There are two items for consideration tonight. The first is the public hearing and to hear any public comment regarding the proposed annual assessment. And once the public hearing is closed, the second item is to adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment to levy the 2526 assessments for the lighting district. And I'm here with any questions. Sorry, I don't have the motions for you on the screen. Apologies.
We got it in front of us.
We have it in front of us. How many lights were there? Just like 4,000?
Just over 4,800.
Are we going to pursue a 218 increase of this? Because it's $2.67 or something like that, it's nothing.
Hasn't changed in 36 years.
Yeah.
That I've been here.
We're using Measure A, love to see, I pay more.
Smud charges us more.
Yeah. Anyway.
It is something that we can look into over the next year. Because it is every parcel in the city, it would be a large Prop 218 effort.
Okay.
What do we, but what, how much are we subsidizing on that?
Currently, it's about $180,000. We're projected to be about $195,000 next year. There is no escalator built into the lighting district, so we can't increase it based on the flat rate that's been set since the city took over the lighting district when we incorporated.
So if you take 190,000 and divide it by the number of households, just round off, it's not much per household that needs to go up, right?
Um, to be honest, I don't, I'm not sure how many parcels are in the city. I haven't done that math, but I can't imagine it would be significant, relatively speaking.
Similar, Mayor and Council, similar to the last item that Director Cave presented, we are looking at options to get the appropriate rate increases put forward in following the appropriate process for that. So that is something that we hope when we come back next year that we'll have an update on.
Fantastic. That looks good. This is a public hearing, so I will, any other comments before I open the public hearing? Questions? I'll open the public hearing. Are there any?
Yes, I do have, Mr. David B. Shelton.
Just a side note, I find it interesting that south of Greenback, there are no districts, and I'm in Park Oak South. Maybe that explains why my street's dark at night, and I have to put lights over my garage door, and all the people on my street do that. That's our streetlights, and we pay for that. Anyway. Mayor, Vice Mayor, other members of the council and city staff, thank you for letting me express my opinion. It is a question of how we're going to spend $200,000, roughly $200,000 in this lighting district. It's been a long time since now we're finally fixing our roads. This item questions the need to take money to be used for road repair and give to residents based on the location for the benefit of, I figure about a nickel a day, but I could not find any number of residents, and I went through all the packet information, and I couldn't come up with a number of residents either. But I figure roughly, it's about a nickel per day, $15 a month we're talking about. But you add it all together, and it takes $200,000 of our road money to provide lights. We need the money on the roads. And this is a problem we inherited from the county of Sacramento. Over time, the residents were based on their location, they enjoyed street riding, the street lighting was upgraded with LED technology, they have maintenance by the city, but inflation has now pushed it to the forefront, which is the cost of electricity. And the cost of electricity is really going to change because we're pushing for the new government we have for the United States, bringing countries, bringing manufacturing back here, and they're able to generate their own power. So you're going to see nuclear power for these facilities, similar to the nuclear power you see on submarines. Nuclear power is the way it's going to be 40 years. I won't be here to see it, but that's where we're going to go, because we have to make four times the electricity that we're now making for artificial intelligence, and people are just slow to pick that up. The cost of electricity has reached a point a lot. To continue the free ride for lighting specific residents will require taking gas money to repair the roads and give it to select residents where their street lighting gift is worth five cents a day. Or take the $200,000 for road repair. It should go to road repair. Road repair is more important than a nickel a day for somebody to have a light in the front of their house when they can put a light on their garage. The total assessment for lighting for these residents is less than $20 a year, so let's do the next right thing and vote rest, yes, to vote this adoption. We should spend more time on stopping the governor and the legislature from using any kind of sleight of hand to remove Prop 13 benefits. Prop 13 is more important, far more important to residents than a $20 a year. On a personal note, I'd like to take time to say that the streetlights on my house, everybody has a light over their garage door, and we have a well-witted street, and we just pay that. Thank you for your time and listening to me tonight.
Thank you, David. Any other public speakers?
I just have one written public comment to read. It's from Rick Hodgkins, and he states, this one I'm going to keep short and sweet, because a few months ago, or maybe it was a few weeks ago, there was a public comment about there not being enough lighting in a particular neighborhood. I cannot remember if it was general public comment or public comment on the agenda identical to this one, but whatever, there isn't enough light, let there be light, because while most homeless people are good people, you never know when someone will hide in a dark place and engage in something crazy. I can tell you that there was a time when I had to walk up Sunrise, and I would be on this cliff, or you would look like a small cliff, and there was very little light. Luckily, we got rid of that little cliff as it was a high step down to the street, and I remember it like yesterday. It was a sidewalk on a little cliff, and there was a fence on one side to people's yards. And so I think we need to continue to look at areas up and down Sunrise within our city limits to see where we could use more of that light. Thank you. And that's all the public comment I have.
Okay. I will close the public hearing if there's no one else. Motion?
Oh, make a motion. Okay. Adopt resolution twenty-two-five, resolution, City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, to confirm the diagram and assessment, the levy fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six assessment to the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
I will second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes. Next? Is there another motion? Was that it? No, that was it. Okay. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number ten. The subject is resolution confirming report of delinquent solid waste charges and ordering collection of delinquencies on the property tax roll. The recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming a report of delinquent solid waste charges and ordering collection of delinquencies on the property tax roll.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Mary Poole with the General Services Department, here before you tonight with the last public hearing. And this one is the resolution to record the delinquent charges on the tax roll. These are related to the garbage bills, and part of our contract with Republic Services requires us to assist them in obtaining the amounts that are due. So this is a step in that process. So tonight's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and then to adopt the resolution to confirm the report of the delinquent charges and ordering their collection on the property tax roll. The authority to do this is vested in the government code, Sections thirty-eight, seven, nine, zero, one, two, five, eight, three, one, and then the municipal code, which provides the authority for the city, the city to record the delinquent charges and to assist contract franchises to collect when we contract for services. It also provides for the public hearing to be held before the City Council for the hearing of objections to the proposed action, the amount of the charges, or both. The summary of the amounts due are a little different than the amounts that are due to the sewer district, but there are over a thousand delinquent accounts.
Wow.
Close to seven hundred thousand dollars in past due balances, with a total due after penalties of right around seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. This was as of July third. Since the notice was issued by the city after the notice of intention at the July, or the June eleventh City Council meeting, there has been a number of people who have been working to pay off their balances. And so there may be a little bit more that this number will change before it finally does go to the county.
You know, it's funny, is at the sewer district, they said that some people prefer to wait till the end of the year and just pay it all, including the penalty, and that they would prefer to just do it all at one lump sum at the end. And so, beyond me.
We do have a number of people who do that, close to a thousand, that do that every year. So that does happen. This is just a slide showing the process and timeline. At June eleventh, the City Council set the public hearing for tonight. On June thirteenth, the city mailed out public hearing notices to all of the property owners from the assessor data of the county. And on June twenty-seventh, there was a public hearing notice that was published in the Citrus Heights Messenger. It's also on the, in the, on the wall outside the City Hall. The public hearing is being held tonight, and then in August, we will do that final reconciliation with Republic Services. And I just do wanna note that Anna Rulon is here. We have another Republic staff person in the lobby that if anyone was to show up, we would be able to help them and make sure that they can become current, if that's what they would like to do.
So this is just residential, because the commercial is not Republic.
Okay. Correct. In August, we will submit the final list to the county, and then we'll receive the amounts due to the city in January, and then we'll refer the amount that we owe to Republic from there.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any comments?
Not for this item, no.
Comments? Close the public hearing. Motions?
I'll take it off your hands. I will move to adopt this resolution twenty-five, a resolution of the City Council of Citrus Heights, California, confirming a report of delinquent solid waste charges and ordering collection of delinquencies on the property tax roll.
Second.
You could've seconded it in.
Gave you a, gave you a chance.
We're having so much fun. Move to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. See, we get giddy at late night here. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number eleven. The subject is approval to submit a letter response to the Sacramento Grand Jury Report entitled, "No Equal Justice for Victims of Elder Financial Abuse." The recommendation is staff is requesting the City Council's feedback and approval to transmit a response to the recent Sacramento Grand Jury Report.
What does that mean? Ahead of schedule?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So as the clerk mentioned, the city did receive this grand jury report in late May, along with a number of other agencies. The city and county of Sacramento, Elk Grove, and Folsom also received it. And so it comes with a number of findings and recommendations that the grand jury is, has stated. Staff has reviewed those. There's only five of the thirteen that apply to the City of Citrus Heights. Some we agree with, sort of, and some we disagree with, and so those are outlined in the response. According to the Penal Code, the city is required to respond to the presiding judge of the Sacramento Superior Court within ninety days of receiving that. So we have until the end of August, but again, we vetted this. We feel comfortable with this response, but wanted to, we needed council's authorization to submit it. And if you had any comments, feedback, perhaps members of the public may have other comments as well. But the draft is, what we believe is substantially compliant and would be a response we'd like to recommend the council approve. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Move approval.
Well, before we move approval, let's talk about it. Does anybody have comments? I'm inside. Okay, so I have one. Of course, I do. Number thirteen, finding number thirteen is my find here. The grand jury finds that there is insufficient community outreach by agencies within Sacramento County to educate elder citizens and their families and caregivers about financial abuse, so the signs of abuse may not be recognized. And our answer is disagree. The Citrus Heights Police Department has a robust community engagement model. Members of the command staff attend monthly neighborhood area and service club meetings to provide crime prevention updates and trends. Elder financial abuse is a regular topic of questions and information provided to our elderly community in person at these meetings. And I just wanna comment that, to add, that we partner with our legislators, legislators, such as Nelo brought, Senator Nelo brought a whole conference, was it like the three people? We did, there were like four hundred people at the, so it's not just our police department, but we partner with our elected officials who have access to the state. They brought three different state agencies, you know, from the Consumer Protection Division, whatever, to talk, and it was mobbed. It was, and people were getting a lot of information. So I think we'd like to add into there that we, you know, if we add a sentence that...
That's a good point.
That we do more than just local, I mean, we, okay? And then there was, that same sentence would fit, and I'm trying to find the other one, that same sentence would fit in another response. Something to do with, one with a... One, I think, I think it's a real important topic, so I'm glad our responses, you know, will, they want to do a dedicated officer, and it's like, I agree, we can't have a dedicated officer. So it's kind of, but everything in here. There was one other one. If you read through it, Ash, if there's another sentence where that could be added that we partnered with Senator Nelo.
Yeah.
There's another one in there.
Mayor, we had, we had talked about this with staff, and I think that's a, we think that's a good addition. So this is, there's two sentences we thought about adding under our response to number thirteen.
Okay.
This is the proposed language. Recently, the City of Citrus Heights partnered with state legislatures, legislators, to host a free, public scam stopper seminar at city facilities, drawing a large and engaged audience. The event included experts who discussed ways individuals can protect themselves from various types of fraud.
Perfecto. That's exactly...
If someone wants to make the motion to include that, that'd be helpful.
Shaffer and I were there, and that describes it perfectly. So we have to make a motion to add that?
Yes, please.
That you said, I can't see. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just say that? Or do I have to say what you said?
No, you could just say, as amended.
I make a motion to add the sentence as amended, as amended.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll amend it and send that in. And I can be here, you wanna send it tomorrow? I have to, I have another Zoom meeting, and I'll come in the morning for my Zoom meeting with the mayors, and I can sign it if you get it over here in the morning.
Before we do that, I don't think that we asked for public comment, and I believe we do have a...
Oh, do we have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mott had actually, that's the item he wanted to speak on.
Yeah, he left. Okay. So are there any public comment on this item of, still not too late? No? Okay, so we have public comment, and none? So is that good enough tomorrow? Don't make me come on Friday.
We, we actually have prepared for your signature tonight in the event that...
It's in here?
We have it here tonight with us.
Okay.
In the event that it was approved.
Oh, great. Okay. Is there another item?
Next item is department reports, and there are none. The next item is city manager items.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor. Council, Ash, and your city manager do have a number of updates for you. At first, I just wanna, I don't know that I've got a slide in here, but if I do, maybe I'll do it twice, but I just wanna recognize our team's fantastic efforts on another very successful Stars and Stripes event. Lot of fun had by so many people, me included. I had a great time there. But wonderful band, the Kid Zone was fantastic, lots of happy smiley faces running around, and a great fireworks show, too. Food trucks, ice cream, just lines were deep, but people were happy, and just a lot of positive comments coming out of that event. You could, you could feel it there. So I just really wanna express my gratitude to the team that made that possible, because they put a lot of their heart and soul and hard work into that. So thank you.
And we did owe that. We did owe that. Thank you.
Yeah, council is very supportive of the team on that, and I've heard a lot of great compliments from you on that, too, and making sure to convey that back to them, so...
Well, as usual, our staff does a great job. I mean, I think anyone who came here for that event said, wow, this is a great event.
First-rate event, first-rate event, that's for sure. Thank you, Mayor. SB, Senate Bill eight oh-two, this is one that was spoken to earlier by the mayor. It's got a lot of attention. It's been written up in the media as well. But it was a proposal by Senator Ashby, and it's, what it's, what the bill does is it transitions homeless services to a joint powers authority, and it really mandates that Sacramento County, City of Sacramento, Citrus Heights, Folsom, and Elk Grove all participate in this JPA. Citrus Heights would have one seat on that JPA board. It's eleven-member board, and the larger jurisdictions have, you know, more representation on that board. What it also does is it takes our critical funding that we receive as a city that we deploy on local issues around housing and homelessness, and it gives it to this joint powers authority to make decisions from a regional perspective. And so, for instance, our CDBG funding that many of our community-based organizations and nonprofits rely on to provide services that are associated with the mission of housing and homelessness, that would now be governed by this board. Our city affordable housing funds, our home funds, a lot of the funds we've used to fund projects, like this INR project that we're working on right now, would now be in control of a board where we'd have one seat on that eleven-member board. So there's a lot of concern, and they also make some changes in this proposed legislation to the regional housing needs analysis.
That's been changed. They're gonna drop that because Secog wrote a letter.
Okay, so that, that...
It hasn't been dropped yet. It's still there, but...
Still there as of now, but it sounds like that change is gonna be made. But there's, there's a number of different concerning items within the bill. Our read is it's not a good bill for Citrus Heights, so we're working actively, you know, on opposition to that. We wrote a letter of opposition. I was on a recent call with other agencies, some of the medium-sized cities in our region, as well as a league of cities rep to talk to Ashby's office around our concerns. I know the mayor, you mentioned that you're gonna have your meeting tomorrow with Senator Ashby, as well as other mayors.
All the city mayors are against, all five board supervisors are against, and the sex city are kind of fifty-fifty.
Yeah, so it sounds like there wasn't a lot of lead-up to this, the bill kinda showed up, and so there's a lot of concern around it. So just letting the city know that we're actively looking to protect our interests on local control around how we use funds that are intended for the City of Citrus Heights to be used in Citrus Heights. There is a final assembly hearing on July sixteenth, where the bill will be heard by a hearing body. Next line. City scoop. So we've got some excitement around this, July sixteenth. That's right here at Van Maron Park, where we held Stars and Stripes. Great place for an ice cream cone, especially between six-thirty and eight. You can expect a lot of shade out there, so hoping to see the community come out for some fun with their neighbors. And ice cream. National Night Out, this was mentioned by the council earlier, and you're right, Councilwoman Shaver, this is one of the last nights before National Night Out, so we're trying to get the word out. You know, registration ends on July twenty-fifth, so there's still time. If you'd like to hold a National Night Out event, please register, and you can see here, we've got a QR code on the screen for anybody that would like to do that. But yeah, have a block party, have a good time, and if you work with us on your registration of your event, we make sure that, you know, police and/or City Hall staff get by your event and connect with the neighbors. Again, that's on August fifth. Illegal fireworks enforcement. So we talked about Stars and Stripes. Well, there's been a lot of concern, I think, for a long time, but especially over the last few years, and a concern of this council about illegal firework activity in the city and the disruption it provides relative to the quality of life and people just trying to enjoy their time. So Chief Turcot and his leadership team really, you know, heard the council on that and, you know, put together a really sound operational plan and brought some additional resources to this effort. And there's been significant results. Some of the preliminary numbers, you know, over forty locations were identified that were violating the social host ordinance that council just recently strengthened, and many of them had multiple devices, and these fines are per device. So, you know, if you're watching this meeting and you enjoy launching illegal fireworks, it's a very expensive proposition, and there's gonna be a lot of people finding that out this year. Over three hundred violations, there are separate violations, were cited, and that's generating fines of over three hundred thousand dollars, you know, based on this new ordinance. There's an ongoing review of the evidence for locations where we're still looking at that, and this is evidence that was collected by, you know, officers in the field. Also, we had the drone program, and then, of course, we have the attestation opportunities for folks that would like to participate in that. But, you know, a big increase in the number of citations this year, a big focus on it by the team, and we had a number of folks that normally don't work on the Fourth of July that came in to work, too, so appreciated the staff's efforts. But Chief Turcot's gonna give a full report out on this on August thirteenth, but I definitely wanna give kudos to Chief Turcot and the team, and I see Lieutenant Lewis and over there, who I was, who gave the briefing that night on the operation, and that Chief Turcot and I attended, but it was really well done and well executed. We'll get a full update on August thirteenth. Council meeting recess.[1799.25] Uh, council meeting recess, so the meeting on July 23rd will not be held due to the summer recess, our next meeting's going to be on August 13th, where I'm sure there'll be council comments about how great National Night Out was, so looking forward to that.
I like that picture, that's a good picture.
That's probably what it'll look like on July 23rd, so, uh, but that concludes my comments.
I want to thank the police department for their great work on fireworks night, that was good, I look forward to hearing the report in August.
Kudos to that, Jay, great job.
And I'm sure the community thanks you as well. I got one email, the guy said he thought he was in a war zone, so I, I'm pretty sure that some of the people in that neighborhood, uh, got results as well. So I, I, I sent him back those stats to say, hopefully next year will be easier for you, so, that's kind of... Okay, is there any other items?
Uh, items requested by councilmembers are future agenda items.
Anybody? Or adjourned?
Fantastic.
I am so tired of baby 802.